Order the Pennsyl County Regional School District's School Committee Business Meeting for October 17th, 2017. Roll call Wayne Adams. Joanna Blanchard.
Here.
Phil Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Andy Murphy, here. Lisa O'Connor.
Here.
Chris Redding.
Here.
Tina Trotter.
Here. 4.6.
We're looking good. All right, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And we're set. Okay, minutes. I'll try not to miss any of them this week. May I have a motion to approve the business meeting minutes from September 19th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's that one. May I have a motion to approve the business meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2017? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We're good. May I have a motion to approve the business, finance, and operations minutes from October 3rd, 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? May I have a motion to approve the human resources meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2017?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? May I have a motion to approve the communications subcommittee minutes from October 3rd, 2017?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. May I have a motion to approve the policy meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2017?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? And may I have a motion to approve the teaching, learning, and accountability meeting minutes from October 3rd, 2017?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Voila. Next section on the agenda, public comment. Would anyone in the audience tonight like to make a comment? And that's a no. All right. Moving on. We're now going to move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Mulqueen's going to fill us in on a few things.
Yep, thanks very much. So, tonight we have three things to go through. One is the school building project. I want to update everybody on our SRO and also give Chris Kelly an opportunity to provide an update on her work here as assistant superintendent. So, I thought I would start with our SRO, Justin Lindahl, just in the event that he and the chief might have other things to do tonight. And so, I just wanted to recognize Justin Lindahl for his good work here at the district. He's been a real benefit for me already. Occasionally, we have issues that come up throughout the district and it's nice to have somebody right on site that I can call or talk to. And I thought that Justin might be able to provide you with sort of a day in the life of the SRO and give you a little rundown. And so, I invited him here and Justin, you're up.
Hey, how you doing tonight, everyone? So, day in the life, what I do every day, a lot of people ask because it's a new position. I start the day usually greeting staff and students as they come in at 7:00 or helping with traffic. Once that's settled, I kind of check in on emails, whatever's going on in the day. A lot of my day has been meeting with principals and guidance councils, those are huge resources as far as really getting to know what's going on. A lot of the stuff that happens, maybe student conduct wise and just behind the scenes stuff, they kind of handle and they know what's going on. It doesn't need to be brought to the law enforcement level. I like to stay in the loop to see, are there, what are the frequent flyers? Who are they? What are they doing? What are the issues? May not be something that law enforcement needs to deal with, but maybe something I can, maybe, we can work on, build an educational program. Drug abuse, bullying, cyberbullying, anything really. So, that and just talking with students really gives me the best idea of what's going on, of what I need to focus on. It's all new to me too. I mean, I've been working in law enforcement for a couple of years, but in the school, it's a whole different world. So, everything had to be kind of relearned, reset. So, throughout the day, I mean, I might get pulled in into a different situation by a principal, a teacher, whatever. They call the radio over the phone all the time. People pop into my office all the time, talk to me in the halls. Hey, I'd like to have you come in and talk to my class about X, Y, Z. We set something up. So, some things I have going on now. I just did a presentation, safety in the home and on the street for the transitions class, which is a special needs class here at the high school with Celeste Winter. I'm working on the upcoming Alice training, which is the professional development. Fortunately, we only got seven signups to the district, but we're going to run it and make the most of it. And also, I think sometime this week, I'm going to be doing a job shadow with one of public safety students. I was recently interviewed by one of the writers for the school newspaper. So, a lot of things going on. We have a lot of stuff planned for the page school and preschools in town for Halloween safety. So, it's all just, see what the needs are. I'm still learning. My biggest resource, like I said, is the principals and the guidance councils. They really know what's going on, what's happening and stuff. So, been a lot of time with them and just think everything's going well so far.
And you're partnering with the new assistant principal, is that right?
Exactly, yeah. I've been working a lot with both new assistant principals, actually Frank Kowalski and Jim Carlson. They've all been great.
Yeah, very good. So, are there any questions for Justin at this point? We'll have him come back and check in occasionally, you know, to give you updates. But, we thought maybe to have him come back, keep his face fresh in your minds and, you know, his job responsibilities are evolving as he said. And I do really appreciate your good work here, Justin. It's been a couple of times that I've relied on him and he's always been right there for me.
Glad you're here, great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, yes sir.
Okay. Next, I wanted to go through an update on the school building project. And tonight, Andy and I think Brad Dorr will be going through an updated version of the slides that you saw a draft version of. One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is that there's going to be a little bit of a field trip to two more schools. To visit two more schools and everybody's invited. It would be up to you to make that decision. So, one is Dearborn Middle High School. It's a STEM-focused high school, middle school, high school in Roxbury. And that's going to be on October 30th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And I can put this out in the Friday information to everybody just to confirm. And then another one is another middle high school and it's in Situate and it's going to be on November 9th. And that visit is from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And again, I'll put that out on Friday to everybody. And if you let me know that you'd like to go, that would be a big help. One of these, I'm not sure which one, would like us to inform them about who's coming. The other one is more of an open invitation. So, I'll put it out on Friday, but that's kind of one of the new opportunities that we have is to visit some schools. And much like we did last time, I think we came away with a lot of information. I think this would be good too. So, I'm going to ask Brad and Andy if maybe we could proceed with the presentation at this point.
Sure. Can I get that stick again? Maybe you checked before.
John Richardson, who's our project manager.
Sure.
Presented tonight. But, happy to see everybody, see some familiar faces, some people from building committee. Dick Hodges, good to see you again.
Good to see you again. You did a fabulous job in North Reading.
Oh, thank you. So, we're excited to be on the team. We've been working steadily away and Andy and John are going to do a little update in terms of where we are, where we're going. We generate a little excitement. It's been incredibly helpful working with Brad's team because they were just... Getting the message, understanding what are we going to talk about today, what are we going to talk about six months from now.
Yeah, so we have two town meetings scheduled so far. We have one on October 30th with Groveland around 7:00, 7:15. And then we have November 13th in Merrimack. And Wes Newberry will get back to me, you know, and I'm sure they'll schedule something too. But, those are the two meetings where we'll go and have this presentation and answer questions at those two towns.
Is the time for the Merrimack presentation the same?
7:00. The reason I said 7:15 in Groveland is that's when they said they'd probably get to us in the agenda. There's one agenda item ahead of us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Jeff, what was that date again?
October 30th, Groveland, November 13th, Merrimack. Sure.
Is Merrimack at 7:00 as well?
Yeah.
Is that good?
That's good. No, that's good, I think.
So, we've never done this together before, so... But, as I said, in this, the goal here is to give people the status of the update on the school building project. The content there is probably a little familiar, but a very different presentation. And I think it's really great. I was going through, so talking about the age of these schools and, you know, as we've said before, the high school is the flower of Eisenhower-era construction. Brad actually gave it out that the middle school was built when the Beatles released Sergeant Pepper. So, that's a good milestone. But, the big ooh-er point here is we're talking about major systems that are over 60 years old. They're more than double past their expected useful life. And when things are cut out and break down, finding replacement parts is incredibly difficult. Sometimes they have to be fabricated and it becomes a really expensive proposition. It's what we'd expect from buildings of this age. We've seen a lot of maintenance issues, a lot of breakdowns. Some of the more notable ones, we had an evacuation due to a gas line leak. We had a water pipe that cost $300,000 to rebuild. And those are just two big ones. There are sort of ongoing issues popping up all the time. It's a running joke about what electricity's going to go out next day to day. This is just how life is in our current schools.
And Andy, that represents both the flood inside and the watermark on the outside of the building for the water river inside.
So, the water was seeping out from the inside of the building?
Yeah, so what you see there is about a 3.5 foot, 3-foot level of water across that watermark, across the building.
Yeah, which not the school might be in Houston.
Yeah, that's right.
And as I mentioned, we have, you know, these ongoing issues. You can see some of these pictures are really remarkable when you look at that electrical duct bag, you look at the broken primary cable. These are all things. It's like in the Big Dig when they were digging up Boston, they would find old plumbing that was made out of olive leaf logs. I mean, they're not quite that old, but we're dealing with some pretty, some pretty archaic artifacts here. But beyond the maintenance issues are the educational issues. And when you think about the school, its own education is very different from how it is today. Back in the old days, it was more of an elementary school, high school. You could sit in rows and be lectured by a teacher and take notes and the bell would ring and you'd leave the class. Today, it's much more fluid, much more collaborative. Students can move around, work in groups, bring in equipment. The classroom is a much busier place and requires a lot more movement and needs to be much more flexible to accommodate different programs. So, when we think about how the current schools are structured, they're really made for that sort of rigid old form of education we all grew up with. Not for today's more flexible environment. With this type of environment, we're not going to see it in more modern high school structures. But, virtually any college you visit, you're going to see that kind of mode of education. So, when you talk about the education environment, what we're really talking about is are we going to be safe with what the kids are going to encounter in college and that? Right now, we're a lot of safe because of how the building is constructed. There are also some really, so, you know, you can look at the R Science Lab versus the new Science Lab. And that's a good indication of what I'm talking about. If you look to the right, you'll see, you know, the tables are all on wheels, the chairs are on wheels, things can move around very easily. It's open, it's airy. If you look to the left, stuff is pretty much fixed. It's not made for movement, it's made for sitting at a desk and doing your work. And this is just one example about how design can impact the type of education the kids are getting. So, we're only two days. What have we accomplished? This is just a quick timeline. If you go way back to April 2015, that's when Dr. Mulqueen entered the staff, issued the initial statement of interest, which they did an excellent job on it. It was accepted by the MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And we entered what's called their eligibility period. And the eligibility period basically involves having to get lots and lots of information about the school, which we actually did several months ahead of schedule in October 2016. And the good news there is we actually were ahead of what the typical schedule is for a school going through this process. So, in November of last year, we actually went into the feasibility, the study phase of the project. And that's what we're actually in right now. And during that phase, we did things like forming the building committee, which currently meets once a month. And there's a subgroup that meets once a week on the building committee. We conducted hearings to understand what the public wants out of any new school construction project. We complemented the hearings with surveys and online activities so we could really get input from the community. And that's something that we want to be doing on an ongoing basis. That's the reason I'm pretending I'm out of overslept and we're here for you today. An interesting thing too is in last spring, Dr. Mulqueen contracted with a group called FOTX Change. They specialize in creating interactive communities where school systems can get the input of the community through a really interesting surveying method where you can sort of grade different elements you want to see in the school system. We did one FOTX Change session last spring. There's going to be another one coming up in the next few months to get further input from the community. And then the other two big things that happened just in recent months is Vertex, we selected them as our project manager. And that was done by the building committee. The building committee also selected Dorr to live here as the architect. Anytime we say we selected it, it actually has to go before the MSBA approves, so they ultimately are the selected by. How about a switch out here?
Good job, Andy.
So, now that we've kind of detailed the feasibility, the design, so I'll kind of overview that for reading out in a second when we get there. As Andy said, these are, these are the CRO, the MSBA modules. We finished module 2 and entered module 3. It's their MSBA way of looking at it, might as well, the most clear. But, it has a lot to do with contracts and starting and stopping of sections, not necessarily building. The main question that we've begun, which is how does for, these modules to reach for, feasibility study and schematic design. And we've established in the middle. The important thing to keep in mind is that the end of schematic design, we end up with a number of descriptions of the scope of the project and a cost for the project to be brought into the towns and to the MSBA to fund the entire rest of design and construction process. So, the price is not known now, but it will be known at the end of module 4. And that is anticipated to be next fall. And then we're actually, then now, MSBA approves that, the MSBA project funding agreement, which is a mechanism which will be reversed. And we'll start design and construction starts. And depending on the option chosen, but this time it's wide open, you know, somewhere between 2021, 2022, we'll open a new school.
Can I ask a question? When you say, Jeff, we'll be ready to go to the town, say, next fall, would we go to request money at the fall town meetings or?
Yes, that would be a great solution.
Okay, so one year from now, county?
Yes.
It may not actually be at county, so it may be at, you know, some other date. But, right now, we're saying fall of next year. You know, kind of work out exactly when it's going to be. So, we have to go to each town, speak with each town in terms of how that's all available.
Have these two modules broken down? So, what are we going to be doing during this? You know, a big part is, is there's two tracks to feasibility study. Educational programming track and physical ability assessment track. We agree for both of those. And then engage in the community on both aspects, communities I should say. And that's very important. We're already kind of introduced from now to look at both buildings. We are writing up the forums and commissioning both middle school and high school. Let's have the physical assessment coming from the local now. And we're beginning the educational side with a series of visioning sessions that Dr. McQueen has set out, nervous about. We're encouraging all to normally attend, but to publicize this and get other people to attend the broadest. Attendance will be the best for the project. We anticipate students, staff, teachers, community members of large, business owners. Because this will be the largest construction project in three towns, so everyone has a schedule whether they're just 200 at school or not.
It really is the basis for, as the design team, what we're doing is we're certainly giving everybody, we're also feeding people information. But, we're really soliciting input of what works, what doesn't work, what are people's expectations? So, that we can take that back and start to synthesize that as we start to work through your educational program. And then as we take that, we start to move that forward as part of schematic design. So, you know, we really kind of want to put emphasis on that, that we're really encouraging everybody to try it then. And you don't tell a party friend because really what this is, is this is the first opportunity that the communities, well, are going to have to be able to hear what's going on with the project, understand what the new opportunities are. Because a lot of times, people get stuck with what they have. They really don't understand, you know, what some of these opportunities are that are out there. We want to be able to share that and clean the slate so that everybody knows that they're starting fresh and really start to generate some excitement so that by the time we get to fall of next year, people are well informed, right? And that people are excited about the opportunity to really create change within the district.
And, well, we have a lot of experience with schools. We don't have any preconceived notion of what your school's going to look like. So, that's what this process is about. And the feasibility study, that's the goal, is to establish what is the right solution for the building. There's a couple of steps in that. The first one is both educational and physical assessment of your educational programming needs and your physical building needs. And then we'll develop a range of options. Some of those are nominated by MSBA as they want us to look at a no build option, a renovation option. Most likely, we'll look at a new construction option. Additionally, as part of this project, the statement of interest include the two grade configurations. So, we'll be looking at both the 9th through 12th grade high school as well as the 7th through 12th middle high school. What that means, how that's distributed, how there's laid out on the site is all off the ground. But, that's what we'll establish in the initial options. We'll talk about how the building or buildings might be located on the site. We'll look at options where there's partial or augmentation, new construction. So, that'll determine a long list of options. We'll show those options to the public, we'll bring those back to the building committee first. And I'll update you guys at the school committee as well. Give feedback and then submit that, that's an interim submission to the MSBA PDP, Community Design Program, with the educational program and a list of spaces, preferred grade configuration, and a range of these options. That's an interim meeting on the go and then we go through a selection process and rule down. We have a menu there, that stage with maybe some semifinalists. We take those semifinalists, the second half of feasibility, and we rule down to one option. That's a collaborative process, seeking input. We'll present that as well. That's called the preferred option. That will conclude, that will conclude this, no, it's not the next space. That will, the preferred option will conclude feasibility study. We'll submit that, right now, we're planning to submit that to MSBA, it's going to be in the May of next year. Put us online for a board approval in the middle of summer, end of July. You need board approval of each of these milestones. That's why we're on this group. That approval, where that's officially proceeded to schematic design, as I said before, in schematic design, we need to detail a building more fully. It's not fully designed or engineered, but it's scoped out, so there's, basically, sort of a cost and a price. And that's a number that we can take out to the towns and also to the MSBA. And as we do do design, they can be able to hold us to that. So, we'll do our engineering, we'll do our design work. In the second part, we'll always make sure that it's within the original budget set at the end of schematic design. And it's a special cost estimate with both Vertex and Dorr. We'll do about two estimates at that, all of it in the last, and feasibility, schematic design especially. Then, does that end in design development, 60% CDs and then 90% CDs right before we lock to bid, it's funded that check. That allows us to make sure we're on target, especially after schematic design, when the budget is fixed. And if we need to do any design adjustments, we can do it at that time. So, here is a little more breakout of feasibility, schematic design. I think we've covered most of those. Like I say, the preferred option, which ends feasibility happens early May. And then switches over to schematic design. That will give us opportunity to, we've already made deadline, to interview teachers right before summer break to do some more intensive programming. And we're going to go off and follow, but we'll be talking to the administration. Work hard over the summer and really detail it out. We have to get everything down, we have to finish all the drawings and the square foot. We have a fully developed set of plans by September that can be priced. We can get a, the cost estimate for a given budget set in September. We can set us up for an October MSBA board meeting and then town votes afterwards. As Brad said, it may not be as your standard town meeting, that's something to feel about with the board's that. This is just another way of looking at, in terms of describing what happens in the feasibility studies. I mentioned we will look at existing building conditions. We've already looked at that, we're now writing that up. We measure those building conditions, not only in terms of industry standard, regulations, we're going to talk about updated systems, but we'll also look at the spaces. And we have a diagram we usually do, we call it the red yellow green diagram. We'll show that to you. We'll be measuring spaces compared to the MSBA guidelines for a typical classroom, for a gymnasium, for all the spaces. Because we ultimately have to develop a list of every single space with its size. We track what's existed and what was proposed and then get the MSBA to sign off on that. And there's a little bit of art to that, a little bit of science.
Could you describe a little bit about the code upgrade option? Because I think it's important people understand that.
The do nothing, yes, so, so that is made by the MSBA that they quote "do nothing", but that doesn't mean doing nothing, it just means not building a new building. What do you think? It's meant to compare apples to apples. So, it's not just the cost of a new school, but it's constantly, what if you didn't build a new school? Well, the cost is, kind of what Andy showed in his presentation, is ongoing maintenance, last minute catastrophic repairs, the least cost efficiently dealing with things, both in terms of procurement of that fix and just the operational. in terms of procurement of that fix and just the operational losses. But we recapture that. We'll also be doing, when we get to schematic design, we have a, we have an actual design, a singular design, we'll be doing an energy model, we'll start to look at operational costs, we'll have some choices that we make collectively about what kind of mechanical systems we use, and that energy model will be the way to evaluate the cost factor of building envelope versus mechanical system A or mechanical system B, and really look at, will be the first cost, same type of operation costs.
Yeah, I think it's important for people to understand, there is a cost to doing nothing, and they need to understand that that's a third possibility to consider.
You've already provided evidence for that. That 500, or 300,000 that you were talking about, that'd be a good thing to hang.
I think though, Dick, you know, so we'll go back to that flood as an example. If the flood had been worse, if we had discovered it at three o'clock in the morning, the Westenberg police had discovered the water coming out of the, we had a waterfall coming out of the door. If it hadn't been discovered and if there had been a catastrophic failure of the building, you wouldn't be able to use it. Or if the electrical fire that occurred had done damage and, and the building caught in fire, it could have burned down. So it's not just a matter of a couple hundred thousand dollars, you could in one night lose the building and then you're going to be out of luck.
Right. Especially if the do nothing option is about making this building shell work, but it would be about replacing the mechanical systems, because you need to do that, they're actively failing, you need to replace the electrical system. And then when we start to do that, the roof is, at the end, it's like, there are some exceptions, but once you get a certain body, code upgrade work, everything's up to 2017, 1967, then you start to turn it again, you've done over the threshold work. So now you have to make it accessible, this building is not fully accessible, it's not up to accessibility for, you're ripping out all your bathrooms. So we're not through all that, we're doing a lot of detail, but what you'll find is the cost of making a building as is, with the rooms as they are, in other words, not improving education at all, it's going to be really expensive and for minimal educational benefit, because it's, it's maybe an old, old idea about education, an education delivery. So we will develop primary cost estimates in feasibility studies, who largely base square foot costs and the major systems, as I said, we don't have a lot of detail at that point, but they're still fairly accurate and they have excellent cost estimates. There's, there's a, that's the contingency and various factors that they're dealing with. But I'm surprised they may not, if, if that's given art to the science of cost estimating, they keep them pretty accurate and just on this sort of diagram. And that will help choose which of the options from the feasibility stage you want to pursue as, as the singular. And that's the, that's the end of feasibility, is to select that preferred option. In schematic design, we will develop line drawings that show all the major spaces, signs, so you can measure against these dangers that we have, you know. We'll look at the whole disposition of the site, how it can accommodate athletic fields, other activities, parking, circulation, trying to improve circulation if we can, we like to separate car and bus traffic, provide separate queuing areas for buses, not apples being walking across bus traffic. If we want to accommodate athletic fields, we'll be respectful of investments that are already made in some athletic facilities and find other areas of the site. There's also some weapons and the riverfront issues, but also opportunities. You know, one of our initial impressions when visiting the site is, you have fantastic site, it's amazing to do it, and it's an anchor. And right now, it's not really engaged, and I think there's some real educational opportunity there, like if we kind of develop the site, not pay to develop the site, but just develop it and make it accessible, there's a real opportunity. And if you come to sit, we'll see, we did that there, they burned a pool, naturalized pool right in front of the building, and we built a observation dock out into the pool, we worked with the conservation commission, permission to do that, they were actually very supportive. And now the teacher, the six way teachers are looking at their students to learn about what defines a road pool, and they're actually going to officially, they're going to do the science, and then actually they've officially registered it as a law. So and then, as I mentioned before, in the schematic design, we'll have a detailed cost estimate so that we can establish the scope and budget and bring it to both the MSBA board and to the towns' board approval. And then that, oh, sometimes you feel like the MSBA numbers, it looks like that, because I can't skip over this, this is just one of the numbers, but it's an awful lot of work. After schematic design, we've established the budget, we've established the scope, but now we actually have to engineer and design it, they have to really describe what their systems are, what the lights are going to be, what type of lights, what the finishes are, lots of detail. So that will take us a whole year to do what we call design development and construction documents. At the end of that, we'll be able to go out to bid and procure a contractor. There's two phases to procurement in mass public construction, there's a certain set of subcontractors who bid it on their own, I think we talked about that at the last building committee, they're called trade contractors, you should choose construction engineer of risk, when they file subbids, you decide to build, we're like, they get bids separately and then their bids are rolled up into the general contractor for the CM's final price. That will happen at the end, and so then hopefully by the fall of 2019, we can start construction, groundbreaking ceremony. There will be regular construction meetings, we do those every week with the OPM, the architect, and the contractor, or a construction manager, Arden McLeod, Dr. McQueen, the inquiry for one or two representatives from the schools or building committee will be there. That's a real opportunity to manage the process, even if we do a new building on the site, there'll still be a lot to manage, managing construction activity, be respectful of school activities, and a lot of experience with that, but it's important to have good communication so we don't have disruptions to either construction or to education. And so there'll be regular meetings, lots of work, about 24 lots of construction, and then we'll be at a river cutting for maybe a building or essentially a river building, so we choose a renovation.
There's a bridge that needs to be moved. Thanks a lot. That's yours.
Any questions?
Do you need the lights?
Oh, yeah. I have a question. So this, so it goes to the MSBA, the final, when the final pricing is all done in October of 2019, right, 2018, sorry, 2018, then that's that, it goes to the MSBA board meeting for approval, and then comes back to the towns, that's like the, exactly, the towns' shares.
Right.
So if it's not in time for what would be considered a regular town fall meeting, do you apply for a special town meeting?
Because we'll talk about that more, there's lots of options, you can actually, the standard way is, and they really do seem simultaneous, because we have to inform the public about where they are. So we'll be doing lots of public meetings, talking about the costs, what we did to the cost, what are the different options, why we chose, what we chose, and why it makes sense. So while we're talking to the public about that, we're also talking to the MSBA about that. And so they're really simultaneous reports, and we'll be reviewing that on staff level with them, and, as I say, as we're going out to the towns, so that the board meeting is all cases, the way the MSBA likes to have things run, is they want their architect and OPM to know what they're doing, and then to talk to their staff, so that the board meeting is kind of a rubber stamp, that things are already worked out by the time it comes to the board. Looks like something that's playing electricity.
Another squirrel bought it.
Try X number of days.
120 days, but we have done, just in a project at Rowley where the town actually voted first, and then it went to the MSBA board. So that's acceptable, that's something we want you to, but the 120 days is hard work. And we use that to encourage towns to.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? So lastly, I wanted to invite Chris to make some comments about her new position and give you an update on her work. So Chris Kelly, you're up.
Sure. The mic will pick me up here? Yep.
Yes.
Thank you for letting me talk about that, Jeff and the team. So it's been a busy six or seven weeks, I think. As I mentioned, this summer, I've been working on getting to know people in the community. Particularly, I've been spending a lot of time with the principals, which has been very helpful, I think. Having another person at central office to discuss day-to-day things and certainly strategic things has been extremely helpful. One of the things that I'm really struck by is the knowledge base of our educational leaders in this community, as well as the commitment and the energy they bring to the job. I feel really blessed to be working with them. They're very proactive, they're very reactive. Jeff and I speak to them almost daily, sometimes several times a day. It's a really collaborative network that has been fostered in this community, which I think is really unique and wonderful. The principals are very comfortable calling myself, Mike Jarvis in the special ed department, Greg, Jeff, you know, one of us, all of us, at any time with a question, even a small question. So that's been really great. I've spent particularly a lot of time with the elementary principals and also with Ken Kelly, definitely some time with, with the high school principal. In addition, I have been taking part of the weekly walkthroughs at the elementary level and at the middle school, high school level, which I think is tremendously helpful to me as a new leader to this community of getting a sense of the buildings, of the strong things that are so evident, and then the things that we can continue to work on. So that's been really helpful. I think part of that conversation, Jeff had worked on an inventory that we could look at, that's been given out to the staff, so it's been really, really powerful. I don't know what's going on there.
We're just trying to throw you off.
Yeah, right. It's been really powerful to have the conversations, not just to do the walkthroughs, visits, but then really have the conversation with the building leaders, and sometimes the department chairs are there, sometimes teachers come, and really have those conversations. One of the things that has really remarked to me is that the staff are really starting to look for the same things we're looking for, which is great.
This is ridiculous.
I don't know why it's doing it. And then.
Let's take a picture.
The fact that it's not evaluative, which is awesome too, I think really allows us to have powerful conversations of teaching and learning. One of the things that we keep coming around in all of the visits is the why. So we only see five to 10 minutes, you know, we're in a class, we see it at the beginning of the class, going over homework, we might see it at the end of class, we might see a powerful discussion, but then the question is always the why. So we could come into any part of a classroom and they don't know we're coming, and then the question is the why. You could have picked 15 things to do during that five minutes, why that, why this lesson, why, why that moment in time? And I think that's the conversation that Jeff and I have been having with other leaders, and that's been great. And then obviously doing some central office operational activities, helping with grants and special ed things, certainly helping Jeff with any kind of, I don't know, any kind of paperwork or compliance things.
Well, we've had, I think, a couple of staff issues that have come up, and Chris has been very helpful with, with that. You know, in the past, whatever the, the point of conflict might be, because of our lean central office, it would come right to my attention. Now I have Chris, she can do problem solving with people, and so a lot of it doesn't come to my attention, I'm able to do the MSBA portion of my job a whole lot easier than I used to be able to. So I find that to be a real benefit to us in central office.
And then another big component of my work is obviously working on curriculum work and professional development. I know one of the strategic goals for the district is really looking at early literacy and looking to create, help create a plan moving forward and look for consistency across the districts at the different schools. So I've been spending a lot of time on that. We're working on some phonemic awareness training that we're bringing in. We're also using some of our Title I funding to do not only some work in Merrimack, but really set up classrooms that other teachers can observe and work with some consultants that we're going to be, that Mr. Marino and I are going to be working with in Merrimack. So I'm pretty busy, it's been great. Everyone is super friendly in this district and very helpful. So anytime you start a new job, even if you've been in the field as long as I have, it's, you know, sort of hard to get up and running quickly, and being a lean central office and just in general, I wanted to really hit the ground running. And people have been great about saying, oh, well, this is this person, or this is how you do it, or this is where you go, or this is something that I worked on, he has the historical piece of that. And certainly the central office staff, including Mary Ann and the team there, have been unbelievably helpful, because I do ask a lot of questions. So, so far so good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, on to new business. So we're going to first discuss enrollment of administrators' children.
And Bill, did you want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, I just thought that as we have extended health coverage to the administrators in the same capacity and spirit as we have the educators and staff of the school, I thought it's just very appropriate to include if an administrator would like to have their children enrolled in the district, subject to the same condition that teachers are subject to, I think it's an invitation and I think it's a statement of, we have a very good school system, please come in. I think as, I know that a lot of our upcoming administrators are younger, so if they have childcare issues, instead of having to rush home, if they're comfortable having their children here, I think it's a compliment to us that they would like to send them here. So that's why I proposed this motion.
And we discussed this in the subcommittee, as you'd see in the minutes, and what you have in front of you is really exactly boilerplate of what the teachers have, and it's just a change of administrative instead of teacher in the language.
So can I have a motion that we extend to administrators the same enrollment of children benefit as we do to the teaching staff?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. On to the next item, the modification of the excess and deficiency policy.
Maybe Brett can take this one.
Okay. Brett.
No, this is brought to the policy subcommittee as an amendment to the E and D policy. A few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, you correctly, in my opinion, started an OPEB trust fund. Now, obviously in a district such as ours, funding an OPEB trust fund is pretty much going to be, if you have any extra money, and our extra money tends to be E and D, our current E and D policy says that we will take that money and put it into the stabilization account. This amendment means it can go to the stabilization account or the OPEB account in whatever breakdown you guys determine during the budget process. So we'll be able to put it in two different places instead of one.
Excellent, thank you. So can I have a motion to modify the excess and deficiency policy as articulated in the packet?
Do you want to read the, so there is a motion, it says to amend section four of the excess and efficiency policy as per the proposal in the policy subcommittee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one. Thank you, Joanna. May I have a motion to amend section four of the excess and efficiency policy as per the proposal of the policy subcommittee?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question. So what would be like the investment policy for this? At this point, stabilization is just in a regular checking account?
Stabilization account is in a CD.
A CD.
But we do it, but right now, there's virtually nothing in it, because we've drained it for the policy, but during the investment is more, if they get, we run it into three month CDs, we kind of roll it around, just to keep it available as quickly as, but right now, there's really nothing in it, so it's just kind of sitting there.
So if the intent, so stabilization is more in and out, whereas So if the intent, so stabilization is more in and out, whereas this, the intent is to put it in and then not bring it back out because we're funding the future?
The intent of the OPEB trust fund is to take it out should it become needed. What they want you to do is to have enough money as people, more and more people are retirees, and your, how can I put this, your obligation to the retirees can sometimes outweigh your budgetary capacity, that you could use this fund to back that up a little bit.
Right, so I guess my question is, because CREST is doing the same thing right now, that they're actually investing in, in something with a slightly higher return?
Oh, no.
Slightly more risk, but certainly not anything risky. So would it be something that the balances would accumulate enough that we would want to think about that? So that we're not constantly putting money in, but it's making money on its own instead of like half a percent, like regular accounts?
When we created the OPEB trust fund, there was a second phase to it where you can create a committee, an investment committee for it. We passed it, we just put it under the control of the treasurer for now, just to create the fund, because there's no money to really talk about now. So after we get through the next budget cycle, we see what our E and D certified is, hopefully in the next couple of months, we determine how much will go to stabilization, how much will go to the OPEB trust fund, then we can determine if we want to create a committee to do, how to invest.
Dad or hire someone from outside, I think makes the most sense.
You can, or you can actually give it to the state PRIM board and they'll invest it for you as well. Sometimes, that's what most people are doing now, letting the state...
I guess that's my point, is I don't want to just kind of sit in there, not doing anything, if it's available money.
No, for right now, it just gives us the policy to put something in. This is, so it gives us a funding source to put money into it. And then after that, we can determine how the investment will go, whether you want to vote to give it to...
Just as long as we do that second phase, as we start funding it.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we'll just sit it there.
No, I wasn't going to let it sit there 0.01 percent, no. I'd lose sleep at night doing that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, next item, the language policy. This was a policy that was discussed at the policy subcommittee, and it's primarily tied to our application for international baccalaureate approval, but not exclusively. It also talks about the obligations of the district for second language learners and the value of language-rich classrooms more generally. So the policy subcommittee is recommending it for your approval. May I have a motion to adopt the Pawtucket Regional School District language policy as proposed by the policy subcommittee?
You'll move? Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have some questions. Who pays for the 15 hours?
I need to be a little bit more specific for me.
I believe it says that educators are required to complete 15 hours of professional development in the area of SEI.
Yeah, so we provide that for free here. I actually run that course. We also run a course for the 15 PDPs of special education. We have a couple of courses that we're running. Mike Jarvis is running one, Melissa McElany is running one. So the district is obligated to provide these free of charge for teachers so that they can become certified.
I also had a question about is, you have the language teachers who are exempt from this based on their own training. They do not need, they just, their certification. For a teacher who's teaching Latin, I don't see the connection with ESL at all. I had four years of Latin and I don't ever remember speaking it. I can tell you a little bit about Cicero.
This is more about how students who have, who are not English language proficient have additional supports in their classroom based upon the strategies teachers would learn in these kinds of classrooms, this kind of training day. So it's not so much about language training as it is about how to give access to students who don't have language proficiency, English proficiency. How do you make accommodations for them? And what we find is that the simple accommodations that can be made are good for everybody, not just for the second language learner. So it's not actually a very complicated process for a teacher to learn, but it's more about awareness and sensitivity and learning some strategies that apply to everybody, you know, more generally than just particular students.
This probably would not happen in the Pawtucket area, but I have graduate students in Lynn where Guatemala children came in, they just came in. Well, Guatemala, there are five different dialects. If that hap, I mean, they do not have translators for all of those children. And the sad thing is, they are learning what a shower is, they're learning how to use the bath, just basic life skills. They're not getting to three times two at all. And I just have this sense that this is something that could be done without the state, putting more on the, more on the teachers. I think they're already overburdened with a lot of things. Final question?
Could I just offer a point of clarification for you? So it's actually the federal government, not the state?
Okay.
So we need to back up to the federal government putting pressure on Massachusetts, who's putting pressure on the local districts? So if you had some experiences I have in an urban center in Massachusetts, you'd know that a while back, they were connected pretty tightly to the federal government because of the inadequacies of their systems in providing support for second language learners. And what happened, Dick, was the system said, well, we can't enforce anything because the state is the enforcing agent for us, so we can't do anything that the state doesn't support us on. So then the federal government went to the state, and now the state is coming for everybody. So it's really the federal government that's putting this pressure on.
One final question. There's a, language in the classroom, learning is differentiated in the classroom in a variety of ways. Elementary students are individually assessed in their reading ability using contemporary assessments and instruction strategies. What happens when a student falls below grade level? What do we do? Do we do Wilson? Do we do Horton Dillingham? What exactly do we do?
So what is good to keep in mind is that we tailor to the student's particular needs. So there's not a generic approach that applies to everybody who's having a difficult time. So the new reading assessment that we're doing, the Houghton Mifflin reading inventory that we actually just started this week for our students in grades one through nine, it will provide us with information on reading levels that equate to generally where a person should be in a grade level. It's based on semantics and syntax. So semantics is the meaning of words, the vocabulary, and syntax is the construction of the sentence, the complexity of the language. So when you assign a lexile value, a lexile range to a student, it provides them with an opportunity to bump up their reading level, these reading texts, and continually strengthen that reading muscle that's being developed over the course of time. Students who fall or who are not comparable to their peers at a particular grade level will have supplemental instruction and occasionally for students who need very tailored instruction, special education supports would be provided for them. But that would be tailored to meet individual needs and that would require more detailed assessments, analytical assessments, much, in much greater depth than our generic screening tools can provide.
Okay, I'm glad you explained that, because I was going to vote no on this until I heard that this is going to be done in-house, as opposed to having to go out, because that's just another thing for teachers to go, that list gets longer and longer and longer.
All of this is right here within the district. So I'm so glad I was able to explain that.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. On to our next item, family engagement policy. And family engagement is important for all districts, but in this case, it's more of an effort of compliance with Title I. So although I support family engagement generally, this is an effort in compliance for us. So I encourage you to approve the district's family engagement policy so that we're in compliance with Title I. And this too went to the subcommittee for policy and they're recommending it. May I have a motion to adopt the Pawtucket Regional School District family engagement policy as recommended by the policy subcommittee?
Certainly.
Any discussion?
Question. I mentioned at our last meeting that the Rand Corporation has evaluated Title I for decades and that it basically flatlined. This is a wonderful engagement policy. Could we do this without Title I? Do we need Title I in order to do exactly what's stated here?
Well, that's what I was saying, is I would be recommending this sort of thing to you anyway, but Title I is requiring it, and so we had to put some attention to it right away. So that's why I introduced it as a good idea generally, but it is an effort in compliance for Title I.
I think it's a wonderful policy. I just, I'm a little tentative about Title I.
I understand.
If we were to invest a lot of money in the stock market for decades and I end up with 50 cents after I've invested 10,000, that's basically where we are with Title I. I'll be voting no on this. All right.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I think if it doesn't pass unanimously on first read...
It has to come back again, yeah.
I have a question then. The second paragraph right before the Title I parent involvement program, it says additionally parent involvement, next line, parent-teacher organizations, the school culture program? Is that a word?
Which paragraph are you on, Chris?
Right above where it says Title I parent involvement.
Okay. Is there a typo?
That's what I can't tell, the school culture.
There is something called culture.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know what it means.
I had to look it up on the internet, because I saw it too.
How about if I, I'll take a look at that.
I don't know what that means, so. I'm just uneducated on that.
It did mean something. I looked it up on the internet. Culture program, it was, it was an educational thing.
But you don't remember what it means, Jeff, Chris.
No, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo.
Yep, there you go.
I'll take a look, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, E, in new business, Pawtucket Association of Teachers Memorandum of Understanding. At the conclusion of our contract talks, these four items were action items that needed to take some committee time in the upcoming year or so. And typically Greg and I would take the lead on that, but I did want to extend an invitation to any of you to participate, if you'd like to. The limit is for a team of four, and the union would also be bringing a team of four. So I didn't know how or if you wanted to participate, how you would want to make those decisions, but this is something that we need to attend to, and the union is also gathering a team of four to participate.
And when you say team of four, the team would be, I assume, yourself?
Well, typically in the past, it's been Greg and I that have gone to represent the district, despite whatever the numbers are from the union. But I did want to invite anybody who wanted to participate, or if you all want to do that on your own, you're all welcome to do that too.
I'd be interested in participating.
I potentially would too, but that's entirely dependent on when the meetings are.
Nothing's been said yet.
Yeah, no.
Shall we, anyone else who might want to participate, say email you in the next 48 hours or so? And then you and I can talk through that? All right, next item, school committee rules. Thank you to those of you who sent me your input from the workshops. For those of you that didn't, if you could get those to me soon, that would be very helpful. I think I have enough stuff now, though, I'd like to move ahead and we can get together and collaboratively develop a draft that we can hand to everyone to look at, ruminate So we now need to call an executive session. We will not be coming back, and it is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Someone.
Roll call vote. Wayne?
Yeah.
Dick?
Here.
Joanna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Andy?
Here.
Lisa?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Deanna?